As Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the Clerk of Council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today.
Mayor Oakes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Mr. Holmes. Ms. Dole.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
I have confirmed that everyone but Mr. Holmes is present.
Right, thank you. I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, during the work session, council members Mead and Dole are participating on the Zoom platform. All other council members and city officials are present in council chambers.
Alright, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously. With the notice provided to members of City Council, in addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During this work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Public comment will be received during council's regular meeting, which will begin at 7:30 PM. Instructions for public comment by telephone can be found on Agenda for the Regular Meeting and on Council's website at www.c i.stanton.v a.us backslash government backslash city dash council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation by certain members of City Council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances, makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the City Council Ordinance 2020 dash 04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v a.us backslash C O G O R D 2020 dash 04, as extended by City Council Ordinance Number 2021 dash 06. Alright, um, I'd like to ask everyone that comes into the chambers or anywhere throughout City Hall if you will wear your mask, we would certainly appreciate it. There's also hand sanitizer at the entrance of the chambers, feel free to use it, and we should have some hand sanitizing wipes at the podium, feel free to use those as well, and please practice social distancing. And to my fellow City Council members, welcome. If you would like to speak up tonight, please address the mayor and the mayor will address you. Alright, the first item on the agenda is the consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Robertson has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Alright, the next item is item number two on the work session agenda and item B on the regular meeting agenda. It's a presentation of FY 2020 budget by the City Manager. Alright, Mr. Rosenberg, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see if we're gonna get our presentation up on...
There it is.
Okay, very good, thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, I am pleased to present to you for your consideration the proposed FY 2022 budget for the City of Stanton for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021. As always, it is balanced and provides a spending plan for the next fiscal year, which will end on June 30th of 2022. Two primary factors influenced the development of the proposed budget. First, we continue to operate in a COVID-19 environment, which will continue to affect the city's revenues into the next fiscal year. Second, we anticipate approximately $1.1 million in additional uncontrollable and in many cases mandated expenses in comparison to the last fiscal year. Those expenses include contributions to the jail and juvenile detention center, operating costs, increases in healthcare costs, and salaries of firefighters previously funded by an expiring grant from the federal government. And if we go back two fiscal years since FY 2020, in the aggregate, those uncontrollable expenses exceed $2.3 million. Mr. Chair will more thoroughly review these budget challenges with you during your first budget work session on April 1st. The total proposed budget for FY 22 is $131,353,978 for all funds. This is a $17 million or roughly 15% increase over the FY 2021 budget. The general fund proposed budget is almost $62 million, and it is a $5.6 million or almost 10% increase over FY 2021. Now let me note to you that the comparison that's offered on this slide is to FY 2021, the current budget year. You'll recall that for this year, we revised the budget downward immediately after its presentation and prior to adoption. If we compare the proposed general fund budget for FY 22 to the actual expenditures for the prior year, which is FY 2020, the increase is only 3.67%. Like many localities, we experienced declines in revenues, staffing, and vacancy freezes, and the use of reserves to balance this current year's budget. So how do we account for COVID-19 going into FY 20? This is still very much a budget in transition. As was the case for the current fiscal year, we will be using fund balance to balance the budget. We're taking the long view, there is a new trend line that accounts for the reductions that were made in '20 and '21. We continue to recognize the pressure on expenditures. We address in this proposed budget the average increase of real property assessments of 9.4%, not including new construction. We continue to take a conservative approach. We also continue to support employees and city services, and as we'll explore in more detail, there are many new city department requests that remain unfunded, and amounts over $3 million. You'll see several things that are new in this budget. We have built the budget based on a reduction in the real property tax rate. We will be exploring with you a new citywide recycling model. We'll be taking our initial steps into a citywide effort to address diversity, equity, and inclusion issues. We've included funding for the pilot project for the Afton Express to provide transit service between Stanton and Charlottesville. We've provided in several different ways for improvements to the Gypsy Hill Golf Course. And you will also see that we've proposed a 2% increase for employees as of January 1st of 2022, so that's midway through the fiscal year, as well as other salary adjustments. I show you here the total revenues for all funds in the aggregate amount of $131 million. The top four categories for total revenues are from the Commonwealth of Virginia, 26.6% from general property taxes, 21.2%, transfers from the general fund, 16.2%, and other local taxes, 11.5%. This next slide shows you the general fund revenues totaling almost $62 million. The top four classes here are general property taxes, on which we are primarily reliant for 44.9% of our revenues, other local taxes for 24.4% of our revenues, transfers from the Commonwealth of Virginia totaling 20.7%, and current service charges totaling 3%. Compared to FY 2021, the current fiscal year, we're projecting a 16.9% increase in other local taxes, a 9.6% increase in general property taxes, and an 11.5% decrease in licenses and permits. Concerning our rates and fees, as I mentioned in the introduction, we're proposing a decrease in the real property tax rate from the current rate of 95 cents per $100 of assessed value to 93 cents per $100 of assessed value. And for your information, each penny on the rate is the equivalent of about $215,000. The proposed reduction recognizes a significant increase in assessments, as I mentioned earlier, 9.4%, not including new construction, and the burden that that causes on property owners during this time of economic uncertainty. So we're proposing that change, the reduction in the real property tax rate, and we propose no other changes to taxes or fees for the FY 22 budget. To give you an overview of the general fund revenues, under the category of other local taxes, we're projecting personal property tax revenue increases of $308,000, sales tax revenue increases of $1.25 million, a decrease in transient occupancy or hotel lodging taxes by $76,000, and an increase in meals tax revenue of 3/4 of a million dollars. In state and federal funding, we are projecting an increase of $152,000 in health and welfare funding, and an increase of $75,000 in street and highway maintenance, and federal funding is expected to increase by nearly $80,000, accounting for some increases and some reductions. And when netted out, they total about $80,000 in increase. On the expenditure side, the top four classes are personal services, accounting for 32.3%, transfers between funds of 14.9%, fringe benefits of 13.2%, and contractual services of 7.9%, and this is for purposes of all funds. For general fund expenditures, the top four are public safety, 22%, transfer to the education fund, 21.6%, health and welfare, 12.4%, and public works, 10%. Compared to the current fiscal year, FY 2021, we are projecting a 13.9% increase in judicial administration, a 13.1% increase in public safety, and an 11.3% increase in the transfer to the education fund. So let's delve more deeply into the expenditure side of the budget. As I mentioned, effective January 1st of 2022, the budget provides for a 2% cost of living increase for all full and part-time city employees. We've accounted for an increase of 8.8% in health insurance premiums paid for the city's healthcare coverage. We have funded two and a half new positions. There are one and a half positions for Blue Ridge Court Services, and both of those are funded 100% from external grant sources. And then we've provided for, at your request, one new full-time position for the Clerk of Council, changing the status of that position from part-time to full-time. We've provided for additional salary adjustments for sworn officers in both the Police Department and the Sheriff's Office, and those adjustments are proposed after we completed reviews of salaries to remain competitive within the region and to address high turnover rates in the Police Department. And I note that there are no changes in the city's contributions to the Virginia retirement system. With respect to education, the budget provides for a proposed transfer from the city to the school division totaling $13.4 million, which again is 21.6% of the city's general fund budget. The school board adopted budget is $40.5 million total, an increase of $2.2 million over the current fiscal year. And I called to your attention that our contribution, as proposed in the budget, is about $440,000 less than the contribution included in the school board's approved budget. Diving even more deeply into functional areas, with respect to public safety, we've provided for an increase of about $1.5 million. The major drivers here include an increase of about $1.5 million in the city's share of operating expenses for Middle River Regional Jail. So this is entirely separate from the questions concerning the expansion of the jail and relates only to the expenses to operate the facility. So we've provided for an increase of just, just over $1.5 million. Similarly, provision is made for an increase of about $233,000 in the city's contribution to operating expenses for the Shenandoah Valley Juvenile Center. As I've already mentioned, we have to deal with the issue of the expiring federal grant for six firefighter provisions, so that the funding for those positions now must be absorbed entirely by the city. It has been, it's a grant that declines every year, and we finally reached the end of the ladder, if you will, so that the city, in order to maintain those positions, now must pay 100% of their cost, that accounts for about $57,000. This will be a recurring issue that, that I'll just touch on briefly as we head through the functional areas. The drivers also include the salary increase, and then you'll recall that for the FY 21 budget, we had furloughs built into the budget. Now, we didn't use those furloughs, they were eliminated as the year progressed, and none of them were ever implemented, but when we're comparing FY 21's adopted budget to FY 22's proposed budget, those numbers show up in the mix, and so they account for part of the difference that you're seeing between '21 and '22. We have the increase in the healthcare costs, and then the pay adjustments for the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department that I touched on already. In health and welfare, we provide for an increase of $320,000. The major drivers there are increases to the city's share for Shenandoah Valley Social Services administrative expenses and child welfare assistance. Community development, an increase of about $150,000. Again, you know, by, by the end of this, I'll sound like a broken record, salaries and benefits and, and the salary increase are included in that increase, as well as additional funds for tourism marketing, including a new visitor's guide. And I would just note that the tourism expenditures will be particularly important as we come out of the pandemic and seek to bring travelers back to Stanton in the numbers that we experienced previously. As I noted in my introduction, this will be the first year of operation of the Afton Express, which will connect Stanton, Augusta County, and Waynesboro with Charlottesville and Albemarle County. The service will be operated by the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission, which operates the bright transit system that serves the region presently. The official launch will occur in July of 2021, right at the beginning of the next fiscal year. The past year was spent planning, defining routes, developing marketing and branding materials, and ordering buses. So the FY 22 budget provides for funding in the amount of $12,346, which is in fulfillment of a fiscal commitment made by the city to provide funding for a pilot project over the course of, I believe, four fiscal years. And, and the hope is that this will provide commuters with a tool to get out of their cars, save money on gas and car maintenance, and address environmental concerns as well. In the area of general government, we've provided for an increase of nearly $500,000. The drivers here again are salaries and benefits for those partially furloughed positions and frozen positions in FY 21, salary increase, healthcare costs, and the additional funds for the full-time Clerk of Council. This also includes areas related to expenditures related to information technology, including replacement commuters, computers, new IT maintenance fees, and professional services for GIS imagery and technology consulting. In the area of general government, the budget also includes $5,000 in funding for diversity, equity, and inclusion training for every city employee. The city will join other localities across the country in taking steps, and I suggest this training is only our initial step to address the important issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion, both within the organization and in how we serve the community. The training will be conducted by the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities, which works with other localities in the state, and for several years has worked with Stanton City Schools. At a later date, we will share more with council about our path forward in this subject area. In the public works functional area, we've provided for an increase of roughly a quarter million dollars. Same, same drivers here that I've already mentioned to you in the other areas. Our current recycling program is both inefficient, inefficient and ineffective. Continuing our current recycling program, we have determined, as is, to continue it as is, will require fee increases, but will still not allow for the recycling of plastics. It is evident that change is required. We've reached out to various groups to help us shape that change, including Shenandoah Green, Friends of the Middle River, the Lewis Creek Watershed Advisory Committee, and Stanton Downtown Development Association. Let me stress that why we are changing is budget-driven, but how we will change will be a result of a collaborative process that includes these organizations and the broader citizenry in the city. For now, what this slide shows you is what we are contemplating and what we have discussed with these groups. We propose that the city's recycling program move from curbside collection to a central deposit location. This shift would bring with it multiple benefits. First, unchanged refuse and recycling fees for FY 2022. Second, less expensive operations. Third, increased recycling options for city residents and businesses, including a resumption of the recycling of plastics, previously eliminated in 2019 due to the collapse of the market for recyclables. And fourth, establishment of a more agile and responsive system that can better respond to future changes in the industry, which are certain to occur. In the areas of recreation parks and library, we provide for an increase of $160,000. In addition to some of the factors that I've already mentioned, we've provided funding in the amount of $3,250 for First T Shenandoah Valley to provide programming in the city's elementary schools. We've also provided funding in the amount of $25,000 to address maintenance issues at the skate park in Gypsy Hill Park, which is in need of attention immediately. And finally, as a one, as, as one of the areas of improvement for the golf course, we've provided for a point-of-sale solution for the golf course, which will capture all data relative to members' frequency of play, time of day, cart usage, profit versus loss projections, and it will also track the geographic locations of golfers. That will give us the data to assess the operations of the golf course on an ongoing basis. Next few slides include detail concerning, concerning the capital improvement plan, which council members will recall you approved back in February of this year, and the year one of that plan is then funded in the budget to be adopted by you next month. I won't go through every one of these slides and cover every... I won't go through every one of these slides and cover every one of these projects. But just to identify a few highlights amongst these projects, we provided for another two hundred thousand dollars in funding toward the cost of expansion of Middle River Regional Jail. So that as of July first, there will be a total of five hundred thousand dollars set aside for that project. The CIP funding includes two million dollars for emergency radio replacement, two hundred thousand dollars for golf carts at Gypsy Hill Golf Course, three hundred thousand dollars for the City Hall HVAC system replacement, two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in the aggregate for bicycle and pedestrian and greenways projects, and one point two five million dollars in the aggregate in new sidewalk and safe routes to schools projects. I think that that both Ms. Beauregard and Mr. Treier can speak to this with more certainty than I can. But from from my perspective, I I think that budgeting is both an art and a science. And I think when we're dealing with with years like the last two and the one yet to come, there's an awful lot of art involved. And we take all of these different factors and we throw them together into the mix and try to come up with something that makes sense. So we're balancing your priorities as we understand them. We're taking into account sound financial and management principles. And we're relying a lot on experience. So all of that comes into play as we are as we develop the budget to propose to you. Previously, I touched on the fact that there were new requests from the departments that remain unfunded in this proposed budget. They include two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars in new personnel and salary requests. And they include two point seven million dollars in operational expenses requests. And during one of your work sessions, we will review with you those unfunded requests so that you have a sense of what is left to the side. Again, this budget is built using one point two million dollars of fund balance. Among our accomplishments for the year, I'd like to call attention to just a few. First, under the leadership of Ms. Beauregard and Mr. Treier, we effectively allocated and managed over four point three million dollars in CARES Act funding to respond to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Among the allocations were transfers to the Economic Development Authority and the Community Foundation of the Central Blue Ridge to fund grant programs for small businesses and nonprofit organizations, and assistance to individuals in need, and a transfer to Stanton City Schools to support its mission in the midst of the pandemic. Second, we commenced the long-awaited Central Avenue Streetscape Improvement Project scheduled for completion in the summer of twenty twenty two. It will transform the landscape of a significant corridor, adding to the aesthetic of downtown. Third, city staff, including employees of the Public Works, Fire Rescue, Police, and Parks and Recreation Departments, joined with individuals and organizations throughout the community to respond to and recover from not one, but two devastating floods, all in the midst of a pandemic. In closing, I'd like to express my deep appreciation to each and every employee of the City of Stanton. In what has been a difficult year for us all, they have risen to every challenge and continue to provide the very best of themselves to this community. Truly, they have served the public. Finally, Ms. Beauregard, Mr. Treier, and I look forward to working with council over the next several weeks toward the adoption of a budget that will allow us to meet what we are certain to be continued challenges and to continue our work even under adverse circumstances to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. That was very well presented. Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Are there any questions by city council members for Mr. Rosenberg? So this is this is the initial presentation of the budget by the city manager. Our next budget work session will be on April first at five P M. But again, this is just the initial formal presentation of the budget by city staff. And I want to thank everyone for all of your hard work. And for everyone listening, this is the proposed budget. Next, the city council will be diving into it and working with city staff to determine which direction to take the budget for our city. Any comments? Any questions by council members?
Just one.
All right.
Ms. Rosenberg, is how I said as a newbie, but I mean, how assured are we are are we of, you know, the three point seven percent from the federal government, the twenty six point six from the state of Virginia? Is that are those figures that we feel comfortable that we're going to be receiving?
Yes, sir.
I'll ask Mr. Treier to answer that.
Year on year, they track consistently with what we've had. Some minor variations, but it's very consistent with historical trends.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Yep.
That question was asked by Vice Mayor Robertson. No, that's all right.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
The one point two million dollar fund balance that's going to be used to balance this.
Yes, sir.
Could you give us a little explanation of where that came from?
Okay.
In what areas?
Right now, the one point two is basically comprised of two pieces. We had stated in the CIP process that we are going to be utilizing, planning on utilizing half a million dollars in carryover to help supplement the jail. The additional seven hundred thousand dollars is going to come from reserves that we have in the fund balance at this time. We are expecting some additional carryover during the course of FY twenty twenty one. We we had reported some positive variances in revenue last week. Those trends remain, and we believe based on our current expenditure rate and the level of revenues that we're receiving, that we will be in a position to 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 fund this without really dipping into our fund balance any further.
A follow-up question. And and how does the one point two million dollars compare to previous years?
We have not used fund balance in pre in recent years. I can't go back historically. I can check for you, but last year in in FY twenty one, while we didn't use fund balance, we did dip into some reserves. We did bring back some expenditures in the health insurance. And and in order to balance FY twenty, in anticipation of balancing needs, we did bring back some CIP revenue in order to to bolster what we thought in March of twenty twenty of what could be a real catastrophe economically for the city.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, again, this was simply the presentation of the proposed FY twenty twenty two budget. City council members, we all have our work cut out for us. And we will be back here on April first at five P M. for our budget work session meeting. All right, this will also be on the regular meeting agenda as item B. The next item is item three on the work session agenda and item A on the regular agenda. It's a discussion of effective tax rate increase. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll ask Mr. Treier to present this item.
Madam Mayor, members of council, pleasure to be back. Tonight, we will be conducting a public hearing regarding the setting of the FY twenty twenty two real estate tax rate. State statute requires a locality to advertise an equalized rate if in the year of reassessment valuation exceed one percent of the prior year's assessed value. It also requires a locality to advertise a public hearing at least thirty days in advance of the hearing date in the local newspaper. In addition, the public hearing on the tax rate cannot occur on the same day as the public hearing on the budget. As you're aware, we do have a tax rate public hearing scheduled for this evening, and our hearing for the for the budget is scheduled for April eighth, two thousand twenty one. The advertisement for the public hearing must contain the following four elements. A, the ad must include the percentage of the assessment increase, which this year is nine point four percent. It needs to state the lower tax rate to offset the increase in assessment, which this year's equals eighty eight cents. While eighty eight cents is the overall equalized rate, some individual properties may experiences increases or decreases in the real estate tax billing at that rate. C, the advertisement needs to state the effective rate increase, which is the difference between the equalized rate and the advertised rate. This year, it equals seven cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, ninety five cents current rate, less the equalized rate of eighty eight cents. This is a seven point four percent increase. Finally, the proposed budget increase must be stated in the advertisement, which in this case, we have advertised a ceiling of ten point five percent of the general fund budget. The ninety five cent real estate tax rate and the general fund percentage increase are ceilings, and the council may lower but not exceed these rates as advertised. Council is not scheduled to vote on this rate until April twenty second. And Mr. Haney is here this evening with us, and he'll be here during the regular season, regular session to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Are there any questions at this time for Mr. Treier? Okay, we're hearing none. That puts us into a break.
So, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
As you as you know, Mary Baldwin has had to reschedule.
Correct.
And I don't want to, you know, I I don't want to dive too deeply, but there's a time cushion. If there are any other preliminary questions that council members have about the budget, we could try to answer those, some of those now, or if you prefer, you could you could take your break. And perhaps council members don't have any other questions at this point in time because you, of course, have just received the budget this afternoon.
Are there any questions at this time? I think we're good.
Very good.
For now.
Very good.
All right. So with that, we are now on break. We will be back at six thirty. The council's now on break. Okay, we're now back from break. And as Mr. Rosenberg indicated, item number four, a presentation by Mary Baldwin University, will be rescheduled due to a conflict. So that takes us on to item number five, an update on clerk of council search. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John Van, the city's chief human resources officer, will present this item.
Madam Mayor, members of council, as you all are aware, the clerk of council position was advertised on March twelfth on our employment website. The posting for this position has also been advertised on websites of the following organizations, the Virginia Association of Counties, the Virginia Municipal League, the Virginia Clerks Association, ICMA, city's Facebook page. Indeed, the posting is out there. Typically, in these positions, we like to have the posting out there for at least a month. And at at this point, we have the position closing on April second. I would ask a city council that we extend the deadline to April sixteenth, which will give us a little over a month to give applicants additional time. You all are aware, you receive the applications that that are coming in. If you are in agreement with extending the deadline, I will go ahead and make the necessary changes. And then we can revisit the application process later in April for city council to review at that time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions by council members? Councilmember Holmes.
We only got four applicants so far.
It's fewer than ten.
We have a couple of council members, I think, are using the facilities.
Okay, sorry about that.
But I know.
I can stay right here until they come back in. I'd be happy to answer his questions.
Your advice, Mom.
Okay.
I'd be happy to start all over again if you would like.
It's a pretty quick presentation, so.
So the posting for the clerk of council position is set to close on April second. That is not a full month, so I am requesting that we extend the advertisement deadline to April fifteenth. That will give folks additional time to apply. We feel very comfortable in terms of the qualifications we're looking for, the salary range we're looking to offer. And we have it out on a number of organizational websites, so we feel good about that. So I'm just here this evening to brief you on that to get your approval to to extend the deadline for the posting at this time.
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Councilmember Mead.
Mr. Van, why do you think the response has been so anemic? We have high unemployment. I mean, relatively speaking, it's a really decent paying job.
Ms. Mead, I I'll be honest with you. I I don't have an answer. As I said, we have, we have it out on a number of organization websites where there should be traffic. I'm going to look tomorrow possibly in in using either radio or TV. That, you know, is an additional cost, but I'm going to be looking into that as well. You know, I think extending it a little bit longer will help. And we still are on track to have somebody in place. I'm looking over at Ms. Smith over there. We're still on track to hopefully have somebody in May.
I think we are. This is Brenda Mead again, just as a follow-up, Mr. Van, the the what the responses we're getting are are not people who are qualified to do the kind of work we're asking people to do. I maybe we're not emphasizing enough what the job responsibilities are.
I certainly can work with Ms. Beauregard. We we I feel as though we've done our homework in terms of capturing what we're looking for, capturing the qualifications. You know, and again, we'll we'll we will press forward in hopes we can get qualified applicants for this position.
Thank you.
Okay. Were there any other questions or comments?
I just can say it's really hard to get a lot of anybody to to apply for anything these days.
You know, it doesn't. Well, I'll stimulus money that are going out, you know, Mr. Holmes, you probably know this in your business that, you know, folks are getting some of that money. They may not be looking for employment right now. I'm not saying that's a broad brush, but that could be part of what we're seeing. I think this is an attractive position, and I hope that we can get some strong candidates for you all to review.
All right. So what you're looking for from us is just a head nod.
That's correct, to extend the timeline through April fifteenth.
All right.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah. Do you mean the sixteenth? Is everybody the sixteenth? Was it the fifteenth or sixteenth?
What is that Saturday? I don't. Is it the sixteenth?
Seventeenth.
Actually, it's the seventeenth.
Let's go with April sixteenth, the Friday. That will be slightly over a month.
Okay, so April sixteenth.
Sixteen.
Everybody's okay?
Up till like midnight that night.
It closes. Yes, it closes at eleven fifty nine and fifty nine seconds.
Are we sure we're going to close at eleven fifty nine? Are we sure we're going to close at 11:59 and 59 seconds and not reopen for somebody who can't use the software or something?
Might have to do that, Brenda. I don't know.
So, okay, so it looks like you have the majority shaking their heads, yes. So if you can go ahead and extend that out, we appreciate everyone that has shown an interest, and hopefully we'll be able to start interviewing some very worthy candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is item number six. It's a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel for necessary legal related advice and discussion pertaining to the performance and evaluation of the city manager. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed meeting.
Oh, I got it.
Councilmember Claffey.
I move to enter a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel for necessary legal related advice and discussion pertaining to the performance and evaluation of the city manager pursuant to Virginia Code 2-2, 3711A1 and 2-2.2, 3711A8.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Holmes is second. Any further discussion?
This is Brenda Mead.
Councilmember Mead.
I object to the premise under which this closed session is purported to be taking place. And, and looking at the sections of the code that have been referenced in the motion, the sections of the code include discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates, so that doesn't apply, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. The mayor told me specifically that this was not about Mr. Rosenberg's performance.
Can we please keep the confidentiality of the closed meeting? Let's respect the confidentiality.
No, this is a discussion related to the motion.
This is actually going into the confidentiality.
This is the premise of the motion. And I will not, you will not shush me, Mayor.
No, I'm not.
You're violating my.
No, 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 I'm not. I'm not shushing you. You're speaking.
Thank you.
Let's not be divisive, Mr. Blair. Mr. Blair, can you please approach?
I have not finished yet.
Okay, I'm sorry. It was unclear.
With legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. So if this is not about the specific performance of the city manager and simply about the process of evaluating a city manager, generic city manager position, then the premise of entering into a closed session is wrong and false.
And I cannot. At this point, it appears we are having the meeting in an open session. Mr. Blair, would you care to comment?
Well, good evening, Mayor Oaks, councilors. To address Councilor Mead's comments, this is the motion to go into closed session. The topics that have been identified in the motion are, as Councilor Mead stated, number one, it's the discussion of the performance of the city manager. And number two, it is for legal consultation concerning the performance of the city manager. Ms. Mead is certainly, or Councilor Mead is certainly within her rights to vote no to go into the closed session. But I think at this point, once Councilor Mead, and again, this is not meant in any way to, to in, in abridge your comments, but again, once the discussion is over, the mayor may call for a vote to go into the closed meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the floor and a second.
This is Carolyn Doll.
Councilmember Doll.
I would like clarification. Did you in fact tell Ms. Mead that this closed meeting was simply about the process of evaluating? Was that not true?
Without going into the details of a closed meeting in a public setting, this is to discuss the evaluation process.
So, so I'm trying to get clarification. So you told Ms. Mead that this was simply about the process? Correct?
This is about the process as well as the contract.
But the contract's public record.
I know that.
That's not, that doesn't qualify for a closed meeting.
I'll defer to our city attorney, Mr. Blair.
Councilor Doll, to address your concerns, the contract is a public record. That is correct. But there are, there can be legal questions and legal advice related to the interpretation of the document. And that is a proper subject for closed meeting.
I disagree.
I'm going to respect the opinion of our attorney that has a JD degree. All right, Ms. Please, all right, out of order, out of order. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey. Ms. Doll.
No.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we are now in closed session.
Okay, guys, this is Terry Holmes. I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawful exempt public business matters were discussed, and only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting, meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
Madam Mayor.
We have a motion on the floor, a second.
A second.
That's by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
No.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That, that now puts us into the regular meeting. As Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today.
Mayor Oaks.
Here.
Ms. Darby. Mr. Holmes. Mr. Claffey. Vice Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Ms. Doll.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
I have confirmed that all councils members are present excluding Mr. Holmes.
All right, thank you. I ask that city manager Steve Rosenberg note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting or telephone.
Madam Mayor, council members Doll and Mead are participating on the Zoom platform. In addition, in observance of Local Government Education Week, we're joined on Zoom by some students. I see some of them, but not all. Actually, it looks like they're all on now. Angie Contreras, DeeDee Karaman, and I hope I came close to pronouncing that correctly, Tyrell Knight, and Elizabeth Lopez. All other participants in this evening's meeting are present in council chambers.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members by city council. In addition to limited public seating in city hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During public hearings towards the beginning of the meeting and matters from the public on council's agenda towards the end of the meeting, public comments will be taken in person and by telephone. Members of the public who wish to participate in such matters by telephone at the appropriate time may call 844-854-2222. And when prompted, enter the access code 619-358 hashtag. Callers will be recognized in order. The public is reminded that public hearings and matters from the public is a time for councils simply to listen to your comments. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Detailed instructions for public participation by telephone have been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page and can be found now on the agenda for this meeting and on council's website at www.ci.stanton.v a.us backslash government backslash city dash council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation of certain members of city council given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the city council ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v a.us backslash C O G O R D 2020-04 as extended by city council ordinance number 2021-06. All right, with that said, I would like to just remind everyone, when in the chambers or throughout city hall, please wear your mask. We do have hand sanitizer outside the entrance of the chambers. At the podium, we provide sanitation wipes if you would care to use one. Please also practice social distancing. In addition, I would ask the city council members, if they would like to speak up, please recognize the mayor, and the mayor will recognize you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would care to do so, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, the next item on the agenda is the invocation moment of silence. It is actually Councilmember Darby's turn. Councilmember Darby.
Thank you, Mayor Oaks. This evening, I will be giving a Christian invocation, so for those who wish to join me, please let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings of this life and for allowing us to gather together as a body of government this evening. Be with those seated here and those listening from afar. Please grant us wisdom to make decisions beneficial to our city. Help us to conduct ourselves as the leaders that you want us to be. Guide us as we work through our differences and unite us, especially during this upcoming Easter season. Remind us to, of what is truly important and to listen more than we speak. And always do those things pleasing unto you, oh Lord, now and forever in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
All right, thank you. The next item is the mayor's report. We have a proclamation for Bruce Elder. Please forgive me, this is, this is a tough one. City of Stanton, Virginia, proclamation in honor of the life and work of Bruce A. Elder. Whereas Bruce A. Elder, 63, a successful Stanton businessman, member of the Stanton Economic Development Authority, and beloved former Stanton City Council member, succumbed on February 2nd, 2021 after a valiant battle with a cruel disease. And whereas, in 1989, Bruce and his wife Kathy moved their growing family to Stanton, Virginia, where he relocated and expanded Bruce A. Elder Antique and Classic Automobile into the 1911 Beverly Garage Building located at 114 South New Street. And whereas, in almost 50 years in the antique business, Bruce used his encyclopedic knowledge to sell cars to enthusiasts in 41 states and 17 countries with vehicles as diverse as an extremely rare 1966 Shelby GT350H presented to film director Steven Stillberg by actor Tom Cruise, to a 1940 Chevy pickup truck for William Shatner, to the actual Chitty Chitty Bang Bang to NASCAR race car drivers by Richard Petty and Darryl Waltrip, along with scores of Packers, LaSelles, Chevys, Pontiacs, Hudson's, Buicks, Fords, Studebakers, Plymouths, Woody Station Wagons, and Nash Ramblers. And whereas, Bruce provided classic vehicles for several Hollywood movies, including Hearts of Atlantis filmed in Stanton, and a Harley-Davidson motorcycle ridden by Morgan Freeman playing none other than God and Evan Almighty. And whereas, wanting to make a larger contribution to his beloved city, Bruce campaigned for and won a seat on the Stanton City Council, taking office on July 1st, 2006. And whereas, while on city council, with his ever-friendly and kind demeanor, sound judgment, superb business skills, personal magnetism, and keen intellect, Bruce served with distinction in many capacities, including liaison to various local and regional organizations, Virginia Municipal League Legislative Committees, and championed a long, hard, and ultimately successful battle against predatory lending in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas, Bruce served two four-year terms on council, stepping down in 2014 with the intention to run against an incumbent for the sixth district seat in Congress when cancer abruptly ended his political career. And whereas, Bruce was a tireless warrior for small business, historic preservation, and the disenfranchised, the downtrodden, and the marginalized, regularly listening to and assisting anyone who needed a helping hand, an ear, a blanket, advice, a job, food, or money. And whereas, Bruce made the city of Stanton and the Commonwealth of Virginia better for all. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that we so honor the life, legacy, courage, memory, and lasting impact of Bruce A. Elder and express our deepest and heartfelt sympathies to his family. And be it further proclaimed that the clerk of council has directed to Ford a copy of this proclamation to the elder family. Signed Andrea W. Oaks, Mayor. This truly was a difficult proclamation to read because the loss of past council member Elder was a loss not only for the Stanton City Council, but the city as a whole. In fact, Virginia is in council member Elder's debt because he did so much, not only for Stanton, but the Commonwealth. He was always a gentleman. He was always respectful. And he may be gone, but he will never be forgotten. Would any other council members care to say anything or make any comments concerning past council member Bruce Elder?
This is Brenda Mead.
Councilmember Mead.
I'd also like to add that Bruce had a terrific vision for Stanton, for the future. And as a member of city council and as a member of the Economic Development Authority, he felt that Stanton Crossing represented a big part of that future. And I think he should be remembered for that as much as for anything else.
Kathy Elder. Would you like to come forward? I would like to present to you the proclamation of Bruce Elder. And if you have any family members in, in attendance, Andrew, if you, if you two would like to say anything, I'll meet you over here. Would you like to come over to the?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming.
This is Carolyn Dahl.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
I just wanted to say that Kathy and her family know how I felt about Bruce. And I, he was a, he was a wonderful addition. He always made sure I remembered that he was a come here. So for all those people who hate come hears, they need to remember that they're some of our best citizens. And I appreciate it every second that I've worked with him and, and I'm missing.
Same here. Bruce would always make you laugh. You know, he always was the first to tell a joke or, or a story that might go on for two days. But, but, you know, it always had a good outcome. So he was, he's the reason I'm on city council, you know, and I took his place. And I still didn't get even with him.
Madam Mayor, I just, Kathy Mark Robertson, I just wanted to let you know that I considered Bruce a friend, was down, down at the shop many times. I'm a car guy also. And sometimes we'd meet up with Bruce every fall up at Hershey. And Bruce would bring that old Woody wagon station wagon up there. But I said, I love cars. My pockets just weren't as deep as Bruce's. He had much better cars than I had. So yeah, I, I considered Bruce a friend and I do miss him. And I agree for you and your family as well. Thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you so much. It's such an honor to have both of you here in the chambers. So you have an entire city that is thinking about you guys and praying for you all. All right, the next item is a proclamation for the Local Government Education Week. City of Stanton, Virginia, proclamation, Local Government Education Week, April first through seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas since the colonial period, the Commonwealth of Virginia has closely held the institutions of local government. And whereas local governments throughout the Commonwealth provided valuable services to the citizens of the communities they serve. And whereas citizen services such as law enforcement, public health and safety, recreational opportunities, and educating local children are most often delivered at the local level. And whereas in recognition of the work performed by local governments, the Virginia General Assembly on February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve designated the first week in April as Local Government Education Week in Virginia. And whereas April second, nineteen oh eight, was the date of the establishment of the council manager, manager form of government in the city of Stanton, thereby making the first week in April appropriate for this designation. And now therefore be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that April first through the seventh, two thousand and twenty-one is hereby designated as Local Government Education Week in the city of Stanton, and that Stanton City Council will promote civic education and engagement in an effort to educate citizens about their local government, strengthening the sense of community and engagement for the next generation of local government managers. Adopted this twenty-fifth day of March, two thousand and twenty-one, signed Andrea W. Oaks, Mayor. I am pleased to present this proclamation to Dr. Laura Van Assendelth, professor and department chair for Political Science at Mary Baldwin University. And with us on Zoom are several students from her state and local politics class. Dr. Van Assendelth will accept this proclamation and then will say a few words about why local government and what her class has been doing to learn about local government.
Thank you for this proclamation. We have fifty-eight students this semester taking state and local politics. And normally we'd all be sitting here and you'd see us at every council meeting and it would be a familiar group of students. But we have fifty-eight of them who have been listening online and all across the state tuning into their local governments. So they've been listening and researching the local policy issues, and they've been reaching out to government officials, including some of you. And so I want to thank you guys for the part that you play in education because responding to these students and answering their questions is a great positive first experience that they have with local government. And that sets the stage for lifelong civic engagement. So I wanted you to hear from some of the students. I've got four of them here. DeeDee, if you want to go first, or and then Angie and Tyrell and Elizabeth are here with us so they can tell you what they've been doing in the class.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm DeeDee Karman. I, we've had a lot of fun in class so far, a lot of really great discussions. And I've had a lot of fun learning about the different policies in Stanton and a lot of the policy situations that y'all have decided to bring up this year, especially things like Gypsy Hill Park and, and that kind of stuff. So it's been really interesting to learn more about the town that I call home for the next two years or so.
Thank you.
I just want to say that it was nice to know that I actually like can reach out to people that hold office. I know I reached out to Brenda Mead and I got an answer like super quick. So that was like really reassuring for me. And I liked that I learned that I could do that and I could reach out to my representatives.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tyrell.
Tyrell.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, we've just been learning about the Virginia policies and everything. I, I, before I took the class, I didn't know too much about it. And it's been a lot of fun being able to learn and just to sit in class and just know how things work here. And yeah, just like my colleague said, it's really nice to understand the politics and everything going on for a place that I call my home for one more year.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
I'm Elizabeth Lopez, and I definitely appreciate the opportunity and getting to know everybody and getting to understand, getting to know what I'm, where I'm living. I'm not really into, I've never been to the city council meetings before I took this class. And we've had amazing discussions that has brought a lot of debate. And I think the, the time I took this class is the perfect moment with where we are in politics. So I appreciate all the support.
Well, thank you for all of you for joining us tonight through Zoom.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Professor, can I ask your students a question?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I'm curious, Angie, Tyrell, Elizabeth, and DeeDee, what, you said you got a year or two left. What, what do you want, what are you going to do? What each, what is your career objective once you get out?
My personally, it's DeeDee, Daphne Karman again. My personal go, goal is to join the Coast Guard after school. So I'll be enlisted in the United States Coast Guard and then hopefully becoming an officer once I enlist and getting to serve the United States and work with people every day. That's my goal in life. And then after that, I want to be a history professor, but that's a long way down the line.
Thank you.
Angie?
Hi, I'm Angie. I actually want to be a community organizer. So we were speaking about like civic engagement. And I think that's just in my lane. I love connecting people to opportunities and just working with communities.
Tyrell?
I want to go into forensic science. I want to be, I just want to work with the law enforcement.
Awesome.
Elizabeth?
I'm in the Army National Guard right now, and I definitely love it. So I would like to join active duty after I graduate.
Oh, that's great.
Angie, I was gonna say, a community organizer became President of the United States. So there you go.
I was going to share one other story that, just so you know, some good things that are going on with, with the people that you are supervising. One of my students, Kit Schultz, is a skateboarder, and he has really enjoyed the skateboard park at Gypsy Hill. And he started talking about how it was in disrepair and not safe. And he was very concerned and wanted to start a GoFundMe to help, you know, fix this, this park. He reached out for his assignment to Chris Tuttle in Parks and Recreation. And Chris wrote him the most wonderful email back and explained to him that that is in the budget and it'll start the, you know, the repairs are going to start in July and, and he would like to have some feedback from the other skateboarders. So Kit was just so impressed that this person actually contacted him back and already had a plan in place to fix that park. So good things are happening around the city. Thank you.
Mr. Rosenberg, we have that in the budget. Thank you, Kit. Thank you to everyone for joining us. All right, are there any additional items by members of council?
This is Carolyn Dahl.
Councilmember Dahl.
I would like to tell Dr. Assendelth that I'm glad all fifty-eight of them didn't email me with questions. I had a good number and I had fun answering them. And, you know, I look for all of these folks. You're our future. We're all getting old here on council. And so some people got to be, start jumping in, taking over. It was, it was fun. Thanks.
Right, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
Oh, Mayor Oaks, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that was the end of that.
Councilmember Mead.
I'd like to add that, that I worked with a group of students from Mary Baldwin from both the PEG program and the, and the, and the university on the Shenandoah Green Tree Project a couple of weekends ago. I, I worked with a team that planted, I think we planted twelve trees in, in the Johnson Street area. And, and I got a report from one of the Shenandoah Green Tree Project folks. And I know you all know what that is, that the, the tree project is a project to plant twenty-seven hundred trees in, in the city of Stanton, one for each student in our school system. And so over two weekends this past month, nearly four hundred trees were planted by the Shenandoah Green Tree Project with the assistance of Mary Baldwin students and the YMCA and a variety of other volunteers. And I thought that was great work. That's a permanent and, and a long-term contribution to the health of our environment. And it's a great project. And, and nobody, nobody was looking for, nobody was looking for the press and nobody was looking for photo ops. Everybody was just out there enjoying the project and doing that work. So that's what I have to say.
All right, thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for the work session in regular meeting minutes of March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
That's Terry Holmes.
Councilmember Holmes.
I move, I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented.
The minutes?
Minutes, that's what I said.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Councilmember Mead.
I'd like to ask that line eight, five, six of the minutes of the March eleventh council meeting be amended to state that Barbara Lee conveyed to, to counsel her sentiments in opposition to council's prior vote regarding the November election and the January six events in DC. I, I'm, I'm all for the abbreviation of minutes and what people have to say. But I think it's important to note that Ms. Lee was in opposition, not that she simply communicated her sentiments. So I'll say that again, line eight fifty-six, where it says concerning, it should say in opposition to.
Okay, Councilmember Holmes, do you care to amend your motion to include the changes as stated by Councilmember Mead?
Yeah. Was eight fifty-six?
Yes.
I can't give a half pound of work.
So Terry, again, just removing the word concerning and inserting the words in opposition to on line eight fifty-six.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting with, with one change, and that's on line eight fifty-seven, as the, to change it to in opposition instead of concerning.
Right, correct.
The minute as presented.
Madam Mayor.
So we have an amended motion on the floor.
And with those changes, I'll second.
We have a second to the amended motion by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item on regular meeting, item A, is a public hearing of effective real property tax rate increase. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Phil Chair, the city's chief finance officer, will present this item.
Mr. Rosenberg, Madam Mayor, members of councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we are here to conduct a public hearing regarding the setting of the FY twenty twenty-two real estate tax rate. As was reported in the work session, state statute requires a locality to advertise an equalized rate if in the year of reassessment valuation exceeds one percent of prior year's assessed value. It also requires a locality to advertise a public hearing at least thirty days in advance of the public hearing in the local newspaper, which did occur. In addition, the public hearing on the tax rate cannot occur in the same day as the public hearing of the budget. As you are aware, we have a tax public hearing right now, and the public hearing on the budget will occur, is scheduled to occur on April eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. The advertisement must contain four, four elements. The ad must include the percentage of the assessed value increase, nine point four percent, the equalized rate, which is eighty-eight cents, the effective rate increase of seven cents or seven point four percent, and finally, the proposed total budget increase for the general fund cannot exceed ten point five percent. The ninety-five cent real estate tax rate and the general fund percentage increase of ten point five percent represents ceilings that the council may lower but not exceed these rates or ratios as advertised. Council is not scheduled to vote on this rate until April twenty-second. And once again, Charlie Haney, our assessor, is here with us to answer any questions.
All right. Does the council have any questions or comments? All right, I think you're getting off easy tonight. All right, with that, I will bang the gavel for the public hearing. And when I do so, that'll open up the public hearing. We'll take comments from citizens in the audience as well as through Zoom, whether you're for or against this matter. And once I bang the gavel a second time, that'll close the public hearing out. We do not need to take action on this item tonight. So with that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone in the audience care to speak? Mr. Rosenberg, do we have?
We have one caller on the line, Madam Mayor, so we can check and see if they're calling on this public hearing item or if they're calling on matters from the public. I suspect it's matters from the public, but I'm not certain.
Okay.
Are you calling about the public hearing on the tax rate increase or are you calling for matters from the public? Perhaps they're just using the line to listen to the meeting, Madam Mayor. So I think that we can proceed from here.
All right. With that, the public hearing is now closed. All right, that takes us on to item B, an introduction of the FY twenty twenty-two budget ordinance.
Madam Mayor, it's a pleasure to be back. Tonight, we are here to introduce the FY twenty-two budget ordinance. The FY twenty-two budget ordinance totals one hundred thirty-one million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and consists of the following: general funds, sixty-one million, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand; debt service fund, five million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand; CIP fund, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand; Blue Ridge Court Services, one million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand; Blue Ridge Court Services, $1,229,000. Water fund, $11,996,000. This does include nearly $7 million provision for the Gardner Springs project. Sewer fund, $3,957,000. Parking fund, $512,000. Stormwater fund, $1,656,000. Environmental fund, $3,252,000. Education fund, $35,253,000. Cafeteria fund, $1,696,000. Textbook fund, $276,000. School CIP, $100,000. And school state operator programs, $3,189,000. This ordinance does include a real estate tax decrease of two cents, which lowers the rate from 95 cents per $100 of assessed value to 93 cents per $100 of assessed value. While the actual rate is projected to decrease, in reality, this does increase the effective rate by five cents per $100 of assessed value as the equalized rate calculated as a, as a result to the increase in assessments equals 88 cents per $100 of assessed value. This budget also includes the following. Water fund rates, no change. Sewer fund rates, no change. Environmental fund rates, no change. Parking fund rates, no change. Council will be free to adjust this amendment as it sees fit in the coming weeks. Budget work sessions are scheduled for April 1st, April 8th, April 15th, and the budget is scheduled for approval on April 22nd. Once again, a public hearing is scheduled for April 8th, and the city manager recommends this ordinance to be introduced as presented.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Council member Mead.
Mr. Treier, on page 52 of the budget proposal, there's a, it's in the definitions section, but it defines a proprietary fund as a fund established to account for specific operations that are financed through user fees for a specific public service. It says the city of Stanton has six proprietary funds. The water fund, the sewer fund, the environmental fund, the parking fund, the golf fund, and stormwater fund. And, and, and I'm only raising that because I have received a number of requests from Stanton citizens, given the high profile that the golf course has taken this year as to why we do not reinstate a proprietary fund for the golf operations.
Happy to address that. First of all, my apologies with the definitions. As it stands right now, the golf fund should not be included in that definition. The reason why the golf fund was, was absorbed back into the general fund, and I think it was at the end of 2018 fiscal year, 2018, and 2019, I believe, is, is when it first was absorbed back into the general fund. It's because the city was in fact having to provide transfers to keep the fund afloat on an annual basis. And from a bond rating standpoint, it was recommended by our bond council that, that, that we absorb that into the general fund because the rating analysts counted that as, as, as a point against us. And to, as an attempt to improve our rating and to lower our debt service rates, it was absorbed back into the general fund. I, I've, I've kept it in the general fund at this point. And I do understand that there's, there is a lot of concern about the golf fund and the golf operations and the profitability. As a, as a alternative control, I was going to recommend to council on our quarterly updates that we would provide a profit and loss statement for the golf fund every quarter. So council and citizens could keep track of just, just what the status of the golf fund was. However, your point, if, if council chooses to extract this from the general fund into its own separate fund again, I can accomplish that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And just so you know, if it, if it, if it doesn't get disclosed, I'll be asking for it on a regular basis, so.
Oh, it'll be disclosed.
And then the other question I had was that I see where we proposed a discontinuance of curbside recycling so that, so that we can offer recycling of plastics. And, and my understanding was that, that recycling of plastics did not make economic sense because the price of oil, the per barrel was so low that creating, using recycled plastic was not cost effective when compared to manufacturing virgin plastics from oil. So how is it that, how is it that we can somehow now profitably recycle plastic when we couldn't do that last year? Have oil prices come up that much?
Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, if I may address council member Mead's inquiry.
Please.
Jeff Johnston, who's not with us this evening and can address this in more detail for you at a work session, Ms. Mead has been working this issue. And what we have learned is that the, the primary issue today with the plastics recycling is the contamination of the product that we provide to the processors. And if we're able to, if we're able to provide an uncontaminated product stream to the processors, then, then there's a, there's an upside to continued recycling, including recycling of, of plastics. And that's the purpose behind the proposed transition to a central deposit location, which would be staffed by city employees who would monitor the incoming materials and educate citizens on what materials are and are not acceptable for recycling purposes. And so that, that's a very high level explanation in an effort to preliminarily answer your question. And Mr. Johnston will certainly be able to dive into more details during the one, one of the work sessions. But he's been looking at this issue very closely, and it's precisely these sorts of topics that he's been discussing with the various interested groups that I mentioned during the budget presentation.
Yeah, thank you. I've heard from those groups as well. And my other question is that, that is there a possibility that we could take advantage of the Commonwealth's, the, the state of Virginia's passage of, of a state law that says that we can impose taxes or fees on single-use plastic bags to offset some of the costs of recycling? Could we get a proposal of some kind as part of this budget process on what we might generate in terms of income to offset, offset the, the environmental impacts of single-use plastic
We can work towards that, Ms. Mead. Absolutely. I will get up with Jeff Johnston in the morning. And, and, and I am not aware of that. However, we, we, we may reach out to you to garner some more information. So we're on it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Council member Holmes.
Mr. Treier, I had a couple of questions, too. I was curious, did water and sewer hook-up fees, did they go, did they go up to us or are they pretty steady?
They, they have remained flat at, at this time. Jeff Johnston, I, I think is, is having a study done and, and will have a recommendation for council probably during the next budget cycle.
And we also are planning on reinstituting some parking fees, maybe to help offset some of the, the, the repairs and stuff that we have to do to the, the parking.
Yeah. We have taken a hit during the pandemic with parking revenue, which, which, which has put our parking fund in, in a bit of jeopardy. You know, because it's actually, it could potentially fall in, into golf fund type scenario if we're not careful. There, there, there may be some opportunities coming up with the America Rescue Plan to supplement some of those funds to, to, to keep us from having to, to fund or replenish the funds in, in the parking fund. But yeah, we, we, we had closed the parking lots. We stopped taking revenue for a good chunk of the year. Certainly has impacted the fund balance. And, and the rates should be coming back with the assumption of normal operations plus parking enforcement officers. So, which, which we have some vacancies right now.
Yep. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Yes, ma'am.
Council member Dole.
I, I'm looking forward to hearing more about this recycling change, and I hope it includes provisions for how we're going to accommodate our citizens that don't have a car to get their recycling anywhere, or for the elderly, the disabled, those folks who were maybe able to do curbside recycling but won't be able to participate in this. And, and I'm afraid that what it'll really mean is people will just quit recycling because if they got to somehow use the TransBright Bus to try to get to the park, it's just not going to work. So I, I don't want us to forget our low-income and our elderly and disabled who would want to recycle. So I'm looking forward to hearing how, how we can recycle plastic if it's not curbside. That just, it's kind of fascinating to me. It looks like you could do it either way, but I, I don't know. And, and the, the other clarification just for the public is, is just to, to clarify for me and for them that our budget currently has functionally a five-cent tax increase.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
I know we, I know the, the documents say a two-cent reduction, and that's true in the rate, but people currently will be paying five cents more than they did before. Not, not five cents, I mean, but like a five-cent tax rate increase. And so I am also very interested in finding out what in the world has happened at the regional jail that would cause this level of increase? Because if we're paying half a million more and we're one of many localities that participate, we're talking millions of dollars. And to me, the only way that we would need that much money for operations would be hiring a whole bunch of staff. But I don't know. We haven't been told that, but.
Unneeded.
But, but I'm, I'm curious to hear anything anybody can.
I'm not sure if you can hear me, Ms. Dole. There is some potential downside with, with, with the operational budget. It has not been formally sent to the budget authority, if you will, the, the, the main committee, which consists of Mr. Rosenberg, Sheriff Robertson, and myself. It looks like we'll, we'll have a little bit of downside, but the, the year-on-year increases over, over the course of time have staggered. And I certainly will incorporate a slide into next week's presentation to disclose that. I think when, when the public realizes the difference between, say, an FY 17 budget and an FY 22 budget, it's, it's going to be shocking. So I will have that for you at the next meeting.
It, it was shocking to me.
All right. I concur with council member Dole. I too would like to hear more about the curbside services being halted and how that will affect our at-risk and elderly community.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Anyone else? Any additional comments? All right. I will entertain a motion.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to introduce the fiscal year 2022 budget ordinance for the city of Stanton and to schedule a public hearing on the proposed ordinance during council's regular meeting on April the 8th, 2021.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second. Terry Holmes.
All right. We have a second. This is just an introduction of the ordinance.
Yes.
By no means are we passing the budget tonight. It's simply an introduction. All right. Any further discussion? Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. The next item is item C, a consideration of ordinance to appropriate an additional 20% of the FY 2021 adopted budget. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, I should have just started by saying that this is the Phil Treier Show.
Welcome back, Mr. Treier.
Thank you. It's good to be back, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we are here to consider an additional budget appropriation for our FY 2021 adopted budget. As you all are aware, in response to the uncertainty of the pandemic, the city's budget was appropriated at a level of 60% to allow staff to assess the impact the pandemic was having on our revenue as the fiscal year unfolded. In December 2020, council appropriated an additional 20% of the FY 21 adopted budget, bringing the total appropriation up to 80% at that time. As reported at our last meeting, revenues continue to flow into the city at a level to meet our FY 2021 budget requirements. Given the overall positive revenue variances, we feel comfortable with appropriating the final 20% of the FY 21 budget at this time, bringing the total appropriation up to 100%. This final request equals $22,858,124. Does not require a public hearing, as one was held during the budgeting process for the full budget amount. City portion of this budget, of this budget appropriation equals $15,417,000. The school portion of this budget appropriation equals $7,440,000, and details have been summarized in your packet, and the city manager recommends its approval as presented.
All right. Are there any questions from Mr. Treier? I'm hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Unneeded. Council member Claffey.
I move to adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget by adding an additional 20% of the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget in the amount equal to $22,858,124 as presented.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks.
Council member Darby.
I second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Council member Mead.
I, I just like to say that this means of, of providing a budget for the city in increments over this year of tremendous uncertainty has been a great example of the excellent financial management of the city that's taken place through this very difficult year. So I want to thank the city manager and his staff for the very, very wise approach to budgeting this year.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any further comments?
This is Carolyn Dole.
Council member Dole.
I would like to thank Steve Rosenberg and Phil Treier and all the finance staff always because they are the superstars for the demonstrated success of a finance department is you don't run out of money, and we haven't.
All right. Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right. Ms. Smith, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. That takes us to the next item. That's matters from the city manager. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not defer to Phil Treier.
All right. Phil, sit down.
Let me start by making an introduction, and I think most of you have probably met Michelle Bixler, who's seated in the back of council chambers. She joins us in her second week as our new communications manager. And she, she comes to us from the town of Strasburg, where she was the community development director and officially and unofficially, she wore many other hats. She has a wealth of experience in communications and public information that started in the city manager's office in Eugene, Oregon, of all places. information that started in the city manager's office in Eugene, Oregon, of all places. She had a foray on the West Coast before coming to her senses and returning to Virginia. And so we're pleased to have her on the team, and I'm sure that you all will enjoy working with her as we do.
Definitely. Welcome.
Welcome.
I, I would like to just make council aware that yesterday at the Dixon Education Center, the Central Shenandoah Health District conducted a vaccination clinic for city employees. I'm not certain of the numbers, but several dozen city employees received their vaccinations at that clinic. I had an inquiry from one of you, and to which I responded by email concerning parks and rec programs for the summer. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to make sure that you all had seen the email and also to share with the public who may be listening that our city pools are scheduled to operate this year, opening Memorial Day weekend as they normally would. And in addition, the Parks and Rec staff is currently making plans to conduct Camp Stanton, which is the summer program. It will be in a modified format. The, the big change will be that there will not be as many slots for children in that program as there are in a normal year, but the operation of the pools and the operation of the camp will, will be conducted in accordance with, with the standards established by the Commonwealth of Virginia for those activities. Today, we issued the permit for shop and dine out in downtown to those dozen or so restaurants which participate. And so you can look forward to further publicity about that renewed initiative, which will begin the first weekend in April, I guess that's Easter weekend, and is scheduled to continue through the end of October. And so on a weekly basis, we'll be closing down Beverly Street from Friday afternoon until early Monday morning, using again the Ballard system that was procured and installed last fall. And then finally, Mr. Plowman has asked me to share news with you that I'll probably botch because it's so technical in nature, but he tells me that, that Stanton yesterday became the fourth locality in the state to flip the switch on the next generation 911 system, which is the manner in which callers and texters communicate with the, the dispatch facility here in this building. And, and so that's quite an accomplishment, especially for a locality of our size to be so high on the list of localities implementing that technology to serve the citizens of the city.
Here, here.
And that's all I have for you.
All right. That takes us to matters from the public. All right. I'm going to read some rules under matters from the public. This part of city council's agenda is entitled Matters From the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about, about a wide variety of subjects. Before we begin, I'd like to share five basic ground rules that we ask you to respect as you may make your remarks. Number one, please come to the podium, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. The mayor will let you know when you've reached your five minutes. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. Two, this is a time for us as council simply to listen to your remarks. In an effort to encourage and maintain orderly conduct, we will not engage in give-and-take debate. If you are seeking information, you may mention it during your remarks, and the city manager or, or his staff may give it, may get in touch, excuse me, with you in the days ahead. Three, we ask that you direct your comments to council as a whole and not to identify members of the council or to an individual employee of the city. If you want to take up an issue with an individual member of council or an employee, please speak with us before or after the meeting. We are also accessible by phone, mail, or email. Again, we ask that you direct your comments to the council as a whole. Four, we expect every speaker to be civil and courteous. Using profanity, making personal attacks on an individual, and doing anything that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be tolerated. Five, finally, as the presiding officer, it is my duty to remind you that if you choose not to abide by these ground rules, I may find that you are out of order, and will ask you to withdraw from the podium. We certainly do not want to reach that point and even beyond. So we respectfully ask for your full cooperation in observing these guidelines. When you reach five minutes, I will let you know. If you continue to speak, I will ask you to step away from the podium. And a third time, I will ask you to please stop speaking and step away from the podium. Otherwise, you may be charged with disorderly conduct under Virginia Code Section 18.2-415A2. If you wish, you may obtain a copy of the ground rules from our interim clerk of council, Ms. Smith. And now we welcome all speakers. The podium is now available for matters from the public. So anyone.
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead. I just wanted to make one request regarding your rules.
Councilmember.
I'd like for you to add that the, the Virginia Code Section 18.2-415.A.2 provides for one year in jail and $1,000 fine. I, I think it's important for people to understand the full consequences of their violating your rules.
Councilmember Mead, I will defer to the city attorney concerning that matter.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks, councilors. Counselor Mead, to address your, your question, that would be, the council sets its rules, and this would be part of the rule. That, that's a council matter to vote on if you'd like to add that particular aspect to the, the statement that the mayor just read.
Mr. Blair, am I correct, though, that the, that the penalty for violation or for, under Virginia Code Section 18.2-415.A.2 is up to one year in jail and/or $1,000 fine? I just wanted to make sure, my, 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 I just want to make sure people are understanding what they're being threatened with.
Counselor Mead, to answer your question, I do know that a class one misdemeanor is up to one year in jail. I believe the maximum fine is $2,500.
Thank you.
This is Carolyn Dole. I had another clarification from Mr. Blair. Council never voted on those rules, so just FYI.
Might I interject? This has been the practice of the council. Previous mayors have read these rules. So this is the practice. Mr. Blair, if we need to vote, we will certainly do so.
You can, but, but I think to Counselor Mead's direct request, that, that would need to be a vote by the council per, per the city code.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, I will accept anyone from the audience that would care to speak at the podium. Does not look like we have anyone. So, Mr. Rosenberg.
We have several callers, Madam Mayor.
All right. First caller.
Yes, my name is Baldwin Jennings, 332 Sharon Lee Stanton. I'd like the, for the city to get the hall caucus and, and landscape, the entrance signs to the city. It's springtime, and flowers start coming in bloom, and especially the one on 250 coming into Stanton. That, that's, it's critical. That, that sign should be landscaped and really look nice. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next caller.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Sheila Omati, College Park, Stanton. Clearly, I am not privy to the mechanics of human resource matters of the city. I trust that the closed session on the city manager's performance and evaluation is equivalent to the self-analysis of performance that you all daily hold yourself ethically and professionally accountable to in the performance of your duties that you took in office to serve and perform. Secondly, I continue to stand in opposition to the expansion of the Meadow River Jail and have twice given my reasons. And finally, I stand in opposition to the spending of city taxpayers' money for $200,000 worth of golf carts for a low-use golf course that has yet to be proven by financial analysis and marketing forecasts with regard to long-range financial benefits to the city of Stanton and its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Yes, hi. This is Sally Glover. I live on Madison, North Madison Street in Stanton. And I'm calling about a couple of things. First of all, regarding the golf course and the, the accounting of the golf course, while I'm glad to hear that there will be a profit and loss statement coming out every quarter, I do wish it had its own general fund. Because if it did, we could also have included, and I also have assets that still be included, the debt service that's paid for the irrigation system, the ground upkeep, and any other ancillary costs that could be hidden in the general parks and rec or other city funding accounts. I also strongly disagree with the Meadow River Regional Jail extension for many reasons that I have already communicated to council. And the new 911 technology sounds interesting, but it wasn't explained. So I'd like to hear an explanation, so we can know how that's going to work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller.
This is Deborah Kushner of 1311 North Augusta Street. Has there ever been such a mass exodus of city employees as right now? Staff is being forced out, or has the environment become so inhospitable or both? Longevity and staff positions is important since these folks know the job and guide council with research and expertise, but they're gone and leaving. Why is that? There seems to be more closed city council sessions than open ones of late. Even fellow council members have a hard time getting past the walls thrown up, especially during the top-secret nomination committee meetings. Allowing other council members into meetings is typically just a courtesy. Thank you. We really appreciate seeing the golf course budget, even as a quarterly profit and loss statement, so that we can track the horrids of new golfers pouring in, thanks to the shiny new golf carts. I'd love to see if the membership rises above the current 20-something number after the increase in golf course staff and $200,000 worth of new golf carts. How responsive and efficient is it that city council hires legal representation? And taxpayers are now paying $7,000 in legal fees, although free representation was available to one unnamed city council member. And now we know another lawyer gifted legal representation to another unnamed city council member. But there's no record of that gift? There is something very funny going on here with these wheeling and dealings. No one's laughing but for city council members. But for now. And even my small request for where the new matters from the public rules originated hasn't been answered. They aren't part of the procedural memorandum posted in the government section of the website where the other rules are. The paper copy I was given by one unnamed council member has no notice of when they were instituted or who approved them. Whoever drafted these new rules should give thought to how to quantify such arbitrary terms as, quote, disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting, end quote, and should apply the same rules to council members who make, quote, personal attacks on an individual, end quote, which we've witnessed bestowed on fellow council members. I was told the new city manager would let me know when these rules were adopted, but this isn't an efficient use of his time. Can no one else research these important rules that we're now operating under? So why not try some old-school, small-town tactics like helping each other? Our new tourism commercial touts small-town, big-heart, which sounds swell, but asks such as my brother and sister's keeper, an equity officer, renovation of the Bickerty Washington Center for Community Use, providing kids some recreation opportunities that are sorely lacking. All these ideas that can make real and positive differences in the quality of many lives have gone unanswered. Responsive? No. Efficient? No. Big-heart? No. Even a petition with more than 300 signatures asking for reassurance that the majority counts of leave in the COVID and national constitution is too much of a stretch and not worthy of council's time or energy. But recreational golf, golf carts are, and the two-a-big kerfuffle is. We're still waiting for our promised responsive, efficient council for the whole of Stanton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Madam Mayor, that appears to be all the callers this evening.
All right. Before I close the meeting out, Mr. John Blair is going to come to the podium and speak about a FOIA matter.
Thank you, Mayor Oaks. I would ask for the indulgence of the council to call for a, and then we can reconvene.
A 15-minute recess and then reconvene. All right. I call for a 15-minute recess.
What's the purpose of this?
Yes, Ms. Mead, and our Counselor Mead and Counselor Dole, I will be contacting you.
In the next 15 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're in recess for 15 minutes. Okay, we're back from break, and we're back in our open session. Mr. Blair.
Mayor Oaks, councilors, I'd like to thank you for your indulgence. I have asked, because the Freedom of Information Act requires, there was a, a certification motion read as you came out of closed meeting. Councilors Mead and Dole voted no to that certification meet, to the certification of that meeting. And the statute requires that they state on the record of the minutes of this meeting why they voted no. So I gave them a call, explained this, and wanted them now to have an opportunity for the record for the minutes, which is required by FOIA, to state why they objected to the closed-meeting certification vote.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dole.
Sure. I voted no because while Mr. Blair provided legal advice, that advice could have been provided in an open meeting. There, there was nothing in, in terms of having a process to decide how to do evaluations on a city manager that warranted a closed meeting. And that's, that's why I voted no.
Councilmember Mead.
I voted no because the motion cited Code Section 2.2-3711A8, which reads consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by council. Mr. Blair did provide legal advice. However, it goes further to say, nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. And that's why I voted no.
All right. Thank you. I would like to state that I trust the legal advice of our very competent city attorney. And with that, the meeting is now adjourned.